The Lynn County Attorney, registered, has to open that something.
He did?
Yeah.
Really?
So I'm sending a picture of the back of that ad. It shows.
Lynn County?
Really? What are you, mad, both parties or what?
That's a rarity.
Everybody gets first thing in the day to take a look at the script.
Right, right. As far as the parties let it out?
Call this meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much, please be seated. Remember to silence your cellphones if you have them for the good of the public. Supervisor Taylor is joining us by phone from...
Manhattan, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Very good. The second item on our agenda is citizen concerns. Is there anyone here to speak on an item that is not already addressed on the agenda? Connie Barrett.
I have a little vision, Bob. While going over the reports that compare services between the two regions, I realized the starkest difference was in the populations that were blessed with Christmas presents, but probably unknown to them will be without some of the services they depend on the rest of the year. What triggers my thinking in this matter was remembering the time when my daughter and I picked up my son at the school for the deaf where he was attending while riding home, and she noting that she did not have a big present on her lap like him, asked if when she turned five and got deaf, would she also be getting a present? I often think of that event at Christmas time. I appreciate the Christmas charity, but knowing that needs, the needs of individuals and our responsibility to provide them is 365 days a year. Charity is not going to be there consistently enough to meet their essential needs. That's why they depend on you. Those core plus services is what helps them be successful. Many times so successful that they can function in a more cost-effective care level. Programs get cut, and you say that even if we stay with Sioux River region, cuts will be made. When and where did we get that information? From what I'm seeing of the behaviors demonstrated here, only core mandated services are focused on. Rolling Hills CEO has suggested that even with the money that we are coming with, our core plus services will not be guaranteed. Our plan has represented the people of this county and region. Rolling Hills has not been in our community meetings or shares our vision. For the 2,000-plus individuals who have received services we have provided, their future days are going to appear bleak. Even in the seemingly good economy, the people with disabilities will not be feeling the high of a rising stock market. Trickle-down economics doesn't necessarily reach this population. And this population is pretty forgotten as their voice and voting record is poor. We have also tried to make sure that cost-effectiveness was in each program, and tightening our belts is a concept we understand. If tax cuts were promised, this is probably how it's going to get done. That has been leaving here for the Christmas holiday troubled. Thank you, Nancy.
Are there any other citizen concerns? Item three is approval of the agenda, I'll move it.
Second.
Second by DeWitt, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pros say nay, passes five zero. Items four through eight constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item four is approval of the minutes of the December 12th meeting. Item five is approval of the claims. Item six from Human Resources is the approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. Item seven from Board Administration includes approval of reappointments to, including item A, seal on District Health. Supervisor Taylor, you emailed me earlier asking for this to be deferred, is that still...
No, that is no longer the wish.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
No problem. And item B, Commission to Assess Damages, the categories A, B, C, and D. We appreciate the people that serve there, there are longstanding vacancies that we constantly list on our agendas, but we appreciate that. Item eight from Community Economic Development Department includes item A, the approval of the reappointments of Tom Bride to the Planning and Zoning Commission and Robert Brulette to the Board of Adjustment. And item B, approval of a construction evaluation resolution for large animal confinement operations.
I'd move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pros say nay.
Aye.
Passes five zero. We are now at our 4:35 PM set time, which is item nine from the public bidder. This is the public hearing and sale of a property parcel, also known as 714 29th Street. Before we receive bids, the public hearing is now open for anyone who would like to speak for or against the sale of this property.
See, no comments, I move the public hearing be closed.
I'll second the motion by Raddick, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pros say nay, passes five zero. We are now receiving bids for this property, if anyone would like to come forward, state their name and address and their opening bid.
Supervisors, my name is Scott Heinman, I live at 2900 Jones Street, and I would make the minimum bid of $367.
Is there anyone else? Going once, going twice. Move to sell the property for $367 to Scott Heinman.
Second.
Second by Raddick, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pros say nay, passes five zero. Item B is our 4:37 PM set time, this is another public hearing and sale of a property parcel, also known as 3105 Orleans Avenue. Before we receive bids, is there anyone who would like to speak for or against the sale of this property? Hearing none, I'll move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Second by Raddick, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pros say nay, passes five zero. We are now receiving bids, if anyone would like to come forward, state their name and address and opening bid.
Melissa Jones, 3101 Orleans Avenue, and a starting bid of $357.
Is there anyone else? Going once and twice. Move to sell the property for $357 to Melissa Jones.
Second.
Second by DeWitt, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pros say nay, passes five zero. Thank you. Item 10 from Secondary Roads, County Engineer Mark Nera, includes item A for action. This is to approve the final pay voucher for project number Perrin 126, resurfacing on Correctionville Road.
The project is complete, now it requires only the board's signature to make final payment to the contractor.
I'll move that.
I'll second the motion by Raddick, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pros say nay, passes five zero. Item B for action is to approve the final pay voucher for project number Perrin 120, bridge replacement on 280th Street.
This project was completed late last fall. It took some time to get all the paperwork finished, but we're now ready to make final payment to Graves Construction. Recommend the board to direct the chair to sign the final payment voucher.
I would move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pros say nay, passes five zero. Item C for action is to receive and approve the annual report of the County Weed Commissioner, Jared Jepson.
They have the report in front of them?
It would have been part of their package, yes.
Are there any questions, fellas?
Anything surprise you this year?
Maybe the amount of Canadian thistles that came through, it kind of got busy. Of course, the dicamba with all the farmers, all the farmers using dicamba this year is a... It got a little tough on us because they thought maybe we were doing a little too much spraying and hurting some soybeans, but none of them were ours. Probably 30 complaints where they thought maybe it was us, but...
Overall, is your spraying going pretty well?
Yeah, yeah, we need to maybe look into updating our spray system on our truck. With the Department of Ag, they're going to probably make us start recording it, GPS and sending it in that way, we're not set up for GPS yet. I think ours is a 2002-year model, and they're looking at probably around $35,000 to update our spray system.
It'll be a future budget request, probably within the next one to two years. This year, you want to talk about the... Or you had to repair just to keep it...
Our spray system in our truck is pretty much obsolete. So when I called the outfit to fix it, they're like, well, you just got to put a new system in. And so I soldered it back together myself, and I mean, it's back to where it's supposed to be, but it's not. It's old, and it's going to, we're going to have more troubles in the future. And of course, all of our tanks are 15 years old on there, which we don't carry a lot of chemical, just in case something would happen, so that we don't have a big spill, but I mean, we're going to end up replacing some stuff.
We replaced the weed commissioner's pickup last year.
Not the spray truck though, the secondary truck, yeah.
I think we've got some miles out of the spray truck yet.
It has 128,000 miles on it, I believe.
And it's a diesel, is it?
Yes.
But the spray rig itself, and then like you talked about, the ability to track where we're actually spraying and report electronically how much is applied in each of those locations, is something that there's becoming more and more demand for by the Department of Ag and other groups. We put GPS in all of our secondary road equipment a number of years ago, the very reason so that we can show where we were at. And this is another one where I think it would be advantageous to us to, not only will it likely become a requirement, but also just to be able to show where he's been out in spring.
The way it sounds to me, they're not going to make me, they're not going to require me to show the public where I have sprayed though, which is a good thing, because if someone has a bug in their garden, they're probably, I mean, if they would happen to look at where I've been, I'm going to have to visit with them about a garden, and that's never, that's not a good thing. A garden is too expensive to replace, so I would rather that. I hope it doesn't go that way. One other thing the Department of Ag is talking about is the clothes that I wear to spray in. When I get done with those clothes, they will not be washed with my family's laundry at home. So somehow, and I don't know how we're going to go about that for sure yet, there's, that's going to have to be... Which I can understand why, I mean, for contamination reasons, I mean, it's not like I get drenched or anything like that, but...
You can just take them to Mark's home, then.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, if he'll fold them.
The other option is either to go with a uniform service or to equip one of the sheds, washer and dryer, we'd have to take a look at how easily that could be done. Our main office is equipped such that we could do that. That was part of the operation, they used to do shop rigs there when that was part of the ownership. But most of our sheds don't come with a washer hookup and a dryer location, so... It will be something that if that does become a requirement, we may need to be adding a budget later. Apparently, he does give the $210 a year uniform allowance. I don't know if we can take and look and see how that would offset if outerwear was provided that would be used when he's doing his spraying. That's something that, this is a new one on me as well, so it's something where I think we're going to have to get some price quotes and determine which way we get them on to in the future.
I might need to check with Airmark or Centus or any of those.
And there are a couple of shops running, he's based out of Pantham, I think, that are serviced by one or more of those groups where maybe we... It may be advantageous to work with one or the other, just because they've already got a route going through there, so...
That's about all I got.
Okay, thank you.
I do have the final copy for the chair's signature. I think we requested that you receive and then approve the weed commissioner's report for 2017.
I'll move to receive.
I'll second the motion by Raddick, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pros say nay, passes five zero. Thank you.
Mark?
Yes?
We chatted at length yesterday, I got a call from a constituent about Buchanan Avenue, and I think it was 180th, the dust control, would you... So if the rest of the board is acquainted with some of the exemptions and so forth, would you bring them up to speed on what you told me yesterday, please?
As Supervisor DeWitt mentioned, we were both contacted by a constituent who lives along the Buchanan Avenue stretch between Old Highway 141 and 180th Street. We had a group of those residents come into the board. I think it was in 2016 as well, before three of the new members were seated before us. We had those folks expressing concerns about the increase in traffic as Whiskey Creek Farms has grown. Whiskey Creek Farms, Peterson Farms, as it's also known, is near, is located with its main headquarters near the intersection of 180th and Charles. They now have an operation where they raise calves that is south of the Prairie Hills facility. So our Buchanan Avenue up to 180th is getting quite a bit more traffic with silage, hay bales, you know, whatever else might be coming and going out of there. He also rents the ground at the county home, so everything that was harvested from that county home property was going back on those very same roads. It's all part of that Prairie Hills area. Our current requirements for controlling fugitive dust are state law, and I've got the four-page document here, we discussed this after I'd already submitted everything to the board for part of your background package. The county engineers worked a long time with the DNR to get a definition for what is fugitive dust. And basically, it's dust generated by greater than normal traffic. In Woodbury County, we define that as more than 200 vehicles a day. We have a number of roads roughly eight, nine miles that we treat with calcium chloride for dust control that are in the 200 to 300 vehicle per day area, traffic count. The system right now takes care of Glen Ellen Road at both the west and the east ends. It takes care of 140th Street, Buchanan Avenue, Barker Avenue, and a part of 120th Street. These are all areas where we have that very heavy traffic due to a lot of residential development. We have taken a couple of traffic counts with our unofficial counters. I should say first that our program is based on the DOT traffic count. They have to crest that 200 vehicle per day Iowa DOT traffic count, those are taken every four years, before we add them to our dust control program. We have done some informal counts with our own traffic counters. Last year, we were coming up in the 170, 180 vehicle a day range on these roads. They, even with our counters, they aren't quite tipping that level of traffic that would bring them under our county policy for application of dust control. There are probably, I think if I remember, at last count, it was either 10 or 12 residences that are along this route. They're unhappy with the growing operation of their neighbor, and they are seeing more dust than they did in the case of the individual who contacted Supervisor DeWitt and I. He's lived out there in excess of 30 years. And with the addition of that calf operation, the trips are now daily. It's not just bringing back silage harvested off the county home acreage. He's got feed, hay bales, and staff going both directions along there. Getting back to the DNR regulations, DNR typically defines nuisance dust when you hit a level of one vehicle every three minutes. So it's... Ours is actually a little less than what DOT is coming up with when you look at what... That would be 20 vehicles per hour, 480 vehicles per day, somewhere in that range is where DNR says generally that you shall take action. It usually takes a haul road or a detour route to push that level of traffic. Our current policy is at a much lower action rate than what DNR is, but it doesn't help these people. Our policy takes into account that we don't necessarily apply to everybody who requests, and the way we deal with that is, we have a program where we allow them to pay for their own dust control. The individual that talked to us has priced that, it's about $700 per year. And it costs us $700 or it costs him $700, he would rather have it come out of county funds. It is not something, even though that is heavy ag traffic, the DNR program implementation guidance that we operate under in Cooper... The County Engineers Association operates under in coordination with DNR, doesn't define ag traffic as being a fugitive dust generator. Normal traffic and ag traffic are specifically exempted. We're an agricultural state, so when you live in the rural area, when you live on a granular surfaced road, dust is anticipated to be a portion of that life. At this point in time, the way that I'm responding to his complaint is, we'll have new traffic counts that will be taken in 2019. That would be, we would be able to see that and where his level of traffic is in comparison to the roads already under our program. We make the request for those roads in 2018. That's when the DOT Office of Transportation Data sends the solicitation out to the county to determine which roads we would like to have treated, or which roads we would like to have counted. So we're planning to ask for counts on that road. This isn't an operation, if you're familiar with the way that property taxes are levied on agricultural property, they're based on productivity of the county. So when you see cattle buildings and physical assets added to rural agricultural zone property, it does, it isn't like a CF Industries where it's a generator, where it's bringing in income that's helping pay for road improvements or additional rural...
A lot of times, it can actually decrease the amount paid.
Pardon?
A lot of times, having buildings and ag can actually decrease.
Exactly, it decreases the load for everybody else, it may increase the load for that individual farmer who builds it, but again, since it's averaged and spread over the whole tax base, it really doesn't generate revenue for us that turns around and allows us to go out there and do additional work. If the board, I guess at this point, we're just trying to make the board aware of the discussion and the concern that's been expressed. This is the second time we've had somebody from that area on those roads come in and express concerns about the amount of dust with the growth of that farm operation out there. Our departmental response is, as I've indicated, we'll do the traffic count, we'll see if it comes under our policy after those traffic counts are given to us, and then at that point, or up until that point, they are eligible to use the property owner applied dust control that's provided for in our policy for those roads that do not meet that threshold of county application. Pretty well sum up what we discussed the other day. I don't know if Supervisor Taylor, if I made my four minutes or not, but...
No, I'm checking.
He forgot to set his timer, so...
Oh, okay.
But that's what I wanted, was the rest of the board to know what we had talked about, because obviously, and then it's a dry year, it has to...
We haven't had meaningful rain since the second week of October, and it's very difficult for the operators to keep the roads in good shape right now because we've got so much loose material in those areas where they've scraped it off, trying to take washboard, they're down to some hardpan that isn't all that great to roll on either, so...
Is there a reason that, I mean, other than site and so forth with that four-way stop there? Just a question, would it be advantageous to remove the east-west stop signs and make it a two-way stop? Because I heard one of the complaints was on the east-west road there, was that 190, 80? 180, I think, that the trucks really rough that up when they try and stop or get close to a stop and don't stop anyway.
When they stop and start, yeah, they do rough it up. That four-way stop sign there precedes me by, it had been there when I got here. I'm not a big fan of four-way stops, but in this case, we do have very limited site distance for the east-west traffic along there, particularly the eastbound traffic. There's a very high bank that sits there that makes it difficult for those folks to make a decision as, if they weren't stopping, as to whether or not it's safe to cross. While the bulk of the traffic is, I'd guess at this point, it probably is on the north-south leg. I'd have to study that to see which way I think we ought to go. I know the intersection, but I really would need to take a look at traffic counts each direction. Right now, I think, if I recall, the Buchanan Avenue between 180th and Old 141 is 90 vehicles a day, and east-west traffic on 180th is, was 70. And I, again, I think we're going to see an increase when we take the next traffic count. The last one was taken in 2015, that was before that cattle operation that down by Climbing Hill was acquired. And I believe the county home farm was in different hands at that time, so... There is a big change in what's going on out there with traffic, but I'm guessing it's going to fall somewhere in the mid 150 range. I don't think it'll quite make that 200-vehicle day threshold, again, based on what we saw when we had our traffic counters out there. Part of the issue those people had was speed, that's why we put our traffic counters and speed meters out there. We found the average speed was 35 miles an hour. There was not a lot of fast movers out on that road. It's very hilly, there's a lot of traffic, and I think people drive it accordingly.
Are you talking Buchanan or 180th?
Both.
Okay.
Neither of those roads lends itself to real high-speed operation. When you're standing still in the yard, though, even 35 seems like somebody's zooming by you.
That help? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm 11 from Building Services, Director Kenny Schmitz, includes item A, approval to set a public hearing for January 16th, 4:45 PM, for Trossper Hoit Mask Control Security Electronics and Elevator Project.
The item before you changes the date to receive bids and to set the public hearing date. The board originally approved January 9th as bid date at 3 o'clock PM in the Board of Supervisors' office, and January 9th, 4:45 PM for the bid hearing. We didn't get the documents completed in what we felt was enough time for the possible contractors or bidders to review the plans. So we wanted to give them a little extra time to be able to do that, especially with the holiday and everything we have. So we were asking to, for two different motions. The first motion would... The first motion would be to set the bid date for January 16th at 3 o'clock p.m. at the Board of Supervisors' office.
I'll move that.
I'll second the motion by Radig. Discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero.
The second motion would be to set public hearing for January 16th, 2018, at 4:45 p.m. during the Board of Supervisors' meeting.
I'll move that.
I'll second the motion by Radig. Discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B is approval of Building Services Project Energy and Construction Manager position and authorization to begin the hiring process. The following item basically is the action required for this, and this is the discussion of the concept.
Yes. Building Services is requesting a reorganization, which we feel will make the department stronger due to, you know, technical... Technical expertise in different areas in the department. We're currently lacking the availability to address some of the situations that we have in the department. Those include not only construction management, but also HVAC issues, which will continue to grow as we move forward and do some of our HVAC projects, especially one that we currently have scheduled for bid. The reorganization would displace two current employees and create one new position. The new position would be Building Services Project Energy and Construction Manager. The two positions impacted would be the clerk-two position and the groundskeeping position. The clerk's two position could be moved to another department to fill a... An open position that's currently available. And that's why the current reorganization timing is very positive. The groundskeeping position would be eliminated. The groundskeeping position is one that, while it's needed, it's more... Or it's best fit with an actual maintenance position that we could utilize full-time doing other technical items. It's the only groundskeeping position we have. The others are all maintenance positions. So I'm asking for a... Or the motion is for approval of the Building Services Project and Energy Construction Manager position and an authorization to begin the hiring process. I'd certainly like to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you see this long-term saving on construction manager contract fees, you know, consulting, things like that?
Yeah, I definitely think it's a viable... Viable question. The backup material that you have, if we were to do every one of the projects that we've talked about as far as CIP projects going forward, if you were to add those all up and look at the construction fees that would be associated with all of those, the fees would be seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for a construction manager all by itself.
That's what I was getting at.
So definitely, would we do every one of these projects? I'm not saying that the board would approve every one of these projects, but even if they have approved one of the projects, this position would pay for itself very shortly. Also, the other positions or the position reorganization changes would result in a net zero change to the budget that we have.
Have you discussed and, you know, received support from Treasurer Clayton on part of what you talked about with the clerk-two position being transitioned?
I have. He thought it was a very good idea, and he was supportive of it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I have one, just kind of to catch myself up to speed. The year I've been on here, I've often wondered why we didn't do some of our project management in-house, and I was always told that nobody had the time to do it.
Correct. It is tough to have the time to manage all these projects. Even coming before the board on agenda items with all the projects that we're doing is tough to keep pace with, let alone trying to manage separate projects. Now, I did do... One of the projects we did was the courthouse elevators, of course, and we didn't hire a construction manager for that job. I very quickly found myself running around in circles from day to day to try to keep abreast of what was happening with the project while other things are going on within the department, so...
I have no qualms with that. My question was going to be, why did we wait the year to do this?
And I think that's a good question as well.
Because we've been putting projects together quite often this year, always with a fifteen percent project management fee.
We have. I'm not sure that prior to this, it may have been a good idea to add the position. It just wasn't... Maybe it wasn't the right time. The timing wasn't falling into place as well as it does now. We would have had to eliminate several positions probably to make it offset the budget at net zero.
And one other question, right now, there's a lot of projects.
Right.
When that slows down, will there still be work for a person in this position to do?
And that's a very good question. Yes, I believe that there will, again, with the HVAC and energy management items that we'll have, new controls, things like that. That's going to take an increased amount of oversight.
Okay. That's all I have.
Anybody else?
If I can, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to speak in favor from afar on this, just because I've seen Kenny work very hard to maximize efficiencies, the tax dollars, and I've always told Kenny, as long as it's going to make his department more efficient, and it's going to be at his recommendation, I think even things like steam traps that we had no level of detail about is saving thousands of dollars of water right now, or the LED project and so on. I think not only is it a net benefit in being salary neutral, the project management fees are a bonus on top of that, but also the energy that I think is going to be saved in future years. So I just wanted to speak favorably of it.
And I'd agree that in the future, there'll be more need to track and report back on energy use, you know, with the upgrades we're doing on the back end, so it makes sense to have someone who's got that in their job description.
All right. I'll move 11B.
I'll second the motion by Radig. Discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 12 from Human Resources includes Item A. Approval of request to deauthorize county positions.
This would be to just deauthorize the positions that we had talked about, the clerk-two in Building Services and the groundskeeper. I didn't want to clarify, as far as the clerk-two, that is a requirement within the ASME contract that the least senior person would be bumped in the event of a layoff like that. The least senior person in this case is a position that's open. So we really got lucky with the timing of that, so no one's affected that in a bad way. It actually makes planning for Mike a little bit easier. He's got some retirements coming up, and it'll allow him to do some training and just work really well. The other side, the least senior person is the person in the groundskeeper position, and so kind of a little background.
I'll move it. Whoa. Second by Radig. Discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. And B is the authorization to initiate the hiring process for the Project Energy and Construction Manager at a wage plan range of seventy-nine to eighty-three thousand.
I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt. Second by Radig. Discussion.
I have one question. How long will this be advertised?
We would advertise it a typical ten days, but we would also leave the position open until filled, so we had time to gather applications from a wide variety of places. Of course, we've set up NeoGov and some other things like that, so we get out on the internets. We'll have a lot of people that'll see the ad in a variety of places.
Okay. Thank you.
All's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Item 13 for action, Juvenile Detention Director Ryan Weber. It's approval of a contract extension for 2018 with Bureau of Indian Affairs.
Correct. This is to enter in the second year of a five-year contract with Bureau of Indian Affairs. It's going really well right now. I think the last four months, we brought in thirty-five and a half thousand. We've been averaging about thirteen youth a month. This time around, bills are getting paid, kids are coming, our relationship seems to be growing with them. Our numbers, since I've started, have been almost full capacity, so it'd be my recommendation to go ahead and enter into the second year.
I'll move it.
I'll second the motion by Radig. Discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 14 from County Attorney PJ Jennings for action. Item includes Item A. Approved request to hire grant-funded attorney.
Thank you, Board. PJ Jennings, County Attorney's Office. I gave you the backup material for this grant fund. I've been kind of leading the board or providing the board with information updated as we went along. This has probably been about a two-year process. The grant was just approved this year, and now all of these entities are looking to hire with these grant funds. I believe at least one, if not two people have already been hired by some of our partners in this grant. So at this point, we're just looking to hire that part-time attorney to fill our obligations with you.
Where would this person be situated?
That's still to be determined. Some of that might be determined with the next item that we're looking at doing, but right now, that's still to be determined exactly where we will house this particular attorney.
If you had to house them today, would they go any certain place?
If I had to house them today, most likely, we'd probably set them up across the street. We have an office over there that we would probably temporarily house them. We have the ability to have computer hookups. Some of the work that they would be doing would be with the court system, so that might be the most reasonable location at this immediate point if we were to hire them today.
Federal grant funded for three years?
Correct. Correct. And it would... When we hire this person, it would be understood that this position expires at the end of these grant funds, so at the end of that three-year period. And we built in with the salary, these starting funds here, so that this individual can also receive some increases over this three-year period, but that's also built into the grant, so...
At the expiration, do you foresee another grant?
With these federal funds, it's hard to say that. If you had to ask me yes or no, I'd probably tell you no, but who knows at this point?
Any questions?
I'll move 14A.
Second.
Another tie. Motion by Radig. Second by Potabom. Discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is to approve the remodel of North Conference Room on sixth floor for senior judge office space.
Yes. We've been looking at some alternative locations. We have, as you know, our fine collections division down here in the basement. They have outgrown that office quite a long time ago. We just do not have the ability right now to function efficiently with the volume that we're doing and the public that we're seeing. So that's the first point. The second part of that is when we have to see these people, we have these ladies down here in the basement, and as you know, they're isolated, and they're having these one-on-one contacts with these folks. We've had incidents in the past where we've had to phone for our security folks to come down because people don't like when we tell them no sometimes. So I don't want to continue to put them in that situation. There's been a lot of times where we've only had one lady down there because of vacations or sickness or whatever the case may be. It's just not a safe environment to have them down there. And so over these last few months, we've been exploring alternative locations and talking with court administration and the judiciary who currently house... Who currently have access to the fourth floor, which is adjacent to our offices on the fourth floor, that appears to be the most, at this point in time, most reasonable alternative. It's ideal now because there's only the one individual on that office space. We're currently trying to cut off because there are going to be senior judges coming on. We don't really want them to move into that space. The sixth floor, which there are also other senior judges on that floor, as well as some of the clerks that work with the court system, so sixth floor seems to be the most ideal place. There are two... One is described better as a break room. They have another, which would be the conference room, which is what we're looking at getting, the most northerly office, that we could convert into office space for a senior judge up there. And I know David Glaser, I've talked to those folks, I talked to John Pellelo before he became as a retiree now. I'm not sure if he's officially retired, but before he left, I know they don't like it, but it seems to be the most reasonable alternative for us to switch. The court system has bought into this. They're agreeable to it, and we would really like to have that fourth floor because it allows us that ability to grow with our offices, allows us to secure that office from the public, but also interact with them efficiently with the job that we have to do with that fine collection division. So that's kind of what we're looking at doing. The cost to adjust that into an office space is reasonable, I believe. I put two thousand dollars on there. Speaking with Kenny, he doesn't believe it would even come to that amount, but I wanted to fill that in there. Those funds will be easily covered with our fine collections that we bring in and to remodel fourth floor for our benefit, and I believe I told you, we will cover that with forfeiture, so it's not going to cost the county any money to do that. So that's basically what we're looking at doing. Like I said, over these last four, five, six months, we've looked at alternatives. This one seems to be the most reasonable at this point.
Now, you're talking about the... On the sixth floor, the conference room, for lack of a better term, the nicer one.
Yes.
And the reasoning, my understanding is, the other one is not an option is because there's a... There's outside access.
There's a fire escape.
You cannot lock that door, which a judge may want to do at some point.
Correct. And in the case of an emergency, it just wouldn't be the right thing to do to have people running through a judge's chambers, because we don't know what that judge might be doing in there at any given point in time, so...
How often do we anticipate this to be occupied?
What occupied? The senior judge's office?
Mm-hmm.
There's going to be a judge ready to move up there right now. Judge Ackerman has already indicated his retirement status. I don't know when he's officially going to be moving up there, but I know he's actively moving his property, his files and all that stuff to transition from the second floor to an office space. And like I said, he's... If we don't make this transition now, he's probably looking to move into the fourth floor office space, and we would really rather not see him go there and then have to uproot him later to get this thing done. It just wouldn't be the most efficient way to go about doing it.
So you're talking about moving the three people you have down here up to fourth floor.
Correct.
And I'm not familiar with that office, so I know that, yes, I've been down here a couple of times for calls, and there's been a couple of times I've just followed people down here because I knew they were historically trouble, and I get the point because that's kind of a secluded area. So how much... Is it square footage-wise comparable on fourth floor to what you have down here now?
It's not comparable. It's much larger. Much larger.
Is that the main reason?
In the future, yes. I mean, we're right now probably at the tipping point of... In the future, yes. I mean, we're right now probably at the tipping point of how much the two current full-time employees down there doing Fine Collections could probably take on. We've started doing some of those extra tasks that we forecasted doing in the future, they're already into that. But at some point, we're going to have to look at, is it appropriate now to add a position? We're not looking to do that right now, of course, but at some point, yes, we will have to look at that and explore what it would take to get that done.
We seem to be out of space just about everywhere in this building.
Things have changed in a hundred years.
Put them out there with Mark.
Remember what we said last time, that one joke, one too many. I think Supervisor Taylor said that, but anyway.
Amen.
Any discussion?
I'm not a big fan of giving up that conference room. If you ever have to bring anybody for an economic development meeting, it's like you're going to be scheduled somewhere else other than the courthouse then.
My only comments, and like I said, I've talked to John, I've talked to Dave. Most offices have one conference room. Talked to Kenny, we can easily convert that one into a conference room. I don't think that would be any different than any other office on any other floor, with all due respect, of course.
And personally, I'd kind of like to maybe take a little better inventory of what each floor looks like myself before voting on something like this. So, it might be something I could reconsider in the future, but I don't know that I'll support today.
Can we move to Shelby for two weeks, till we've all had a better chance to look at it?
We can move anything we want.
Mountains?
As long as you have three votes, right, Pat? Did you have any other thoughts or want to invite anyone else to?
No, I'd just like Chief Judge Hoffmer to talk about the necessity or the importance of probably doing it now versus waiting. If he chooses to do so, like I said, we've explored this for months now. I'm not sure what holding off for another two weeks would do us, but again, that's up to the board to make that decision.
We need to be sure that there are no other alternatives, basically. And, you know, whatever can be communicated to the board to prove that, I think would be helpful. Judge, did you want to speak at all?
Thank you, Dewayne Hoffmer, Chief Judge of the Third Judicial District. So, you are right, we're running out of space, you know. We are migrating around, the sixth floor was the law library back in the day. The fourth floor, where we're talking about now, was where our court reporters all sat at. And so, we have moved those court reporters down to second floor to be closer to the judges. Currently, there was a time when we were regularly evicted from our chambers, and we were up on sixth floor on a fairly regular basis. I changed some offices around, so at least we don't get kicked out of our own office. I mean, that's what was happening, we were getting kicked out of our own office. And so, we've avoided that, and so, we've tried to limit some of that disruption. The difficulty is coming in that we're now getting more Sioux City resident judges, which is good for Woodbury County, because we get to do them. Bad that we have to find space for them. We'll have another one that the governor, I think her deadline is tomorrow, between Todd Deck and Priscilla Forsyte, both Sioux City residents. And so, you know, I think we're going to put them over by myself, but then everything on second floor will be packed. I would love to keep the fourth floor, but Lisa has committed, and I'll honor that commitment, that we'd be willing to give that up. Currently, Debbie Smith is our financial accountant, she was in there, all of our personnel files. She's retiring, we're not authorized to replace her. All of those have transitioned elsewhere around the state, Webster City, Des Moines. Ashley Christensen is in there, she's with our Family Treatment Court. We've determined that if we can find a space on sixth floor, we'll try to transition her to, in the juvenile court services area there. And so, the only issue, and Judge Ackerman, who retired last Friday, is our newest senior judge. He was going to go into the office on fourth floor, formerly occupied by Senior Judge Gary Winell. And so, the only issue is, we have some costs with some phone lines and things of that nature that we need to do. And I've told him, so it's not a cat out of the bag. Judge Ackerman has a tremendous amount of paper. I think he's already filled up three file cabinets on fourth floor, and he would prefer not to have to move twice. But, you know, that will be up to you. We did discuss, and so, just so you know, there have been times senior judges were in the basement down here, it did not work well. We're not part of your phone system, we have our own phone system, and there are no lines down here to work on that. And so, that was one of the major problems during that time. Judge Ackerman has committed and has to be here for thirteen weeks out of the calendar year to work. He is also one of those, as Supervisor DeWitt would say, who takes vacation and still shows up for work. And so, I think he'll be here on a fairly regular basis, in answer to your question. Then, we are currently holding open, unfilled, another law clerk position. We already have two up on sixth floor, and we'll have a spot for a third. Judge Ackerman's position, we're not authorized to fill, I may have to hold it open for up to a year. But if that ends up being another Sioux City resident judge, then I think you can expect that we'll regularly have somebody up on sixth floor in those offices. And I'm contemplating moving a court reporter up there right now, who works for a judge out of county. And so, trying to use that space, Justice Hekt is implied that he may be here at least a couple more years. That may free up some, but that also is not far from when I would like to leave and become a senior judge. So, four-year category for me. So, it's just some of the costs that we're incurring and the inconvenience, but as long as you know that, and Supervisor DeWitt can take care of Judge Ackerman in the morning, I'll leave that task to him, you can tell him. But that's all I have, unless I'll answer any questions you may have.
I'm going to tell you, PJ, my only problem is, on your thing, it says that the court administration is willingly agreeing to give up the space for the room on the sixth floor.
Correct.
Yet, the one that Mr. Glaser gave to us, he said that Judge Ackerman said he doesn't care where he goes. So, I'm kind of, he said correctly, we're just running out of places to do anything.
I do have to say, as the administrator, and for reasons I'll explain in a moment, the court's secure area, as you know, is becoming a term of art. And I'd like to have the court people in close proximity to each other, because it eliminates a whole bunch of problems. And so, that's why, you know, my goal would be on sixth floor is the option, best available.
That's really the same goal you have.
Yes.
PJ's.
It always has been, so.
But what do you do with the, you know, repercussions, I guess? It's separate from what you're wanting to do, which is to consolidate. There's a separate, you know, consequence and, you know. You do have a point about two conference rooms being atypical in the courthouse.
And I just want to make that understood, that's the last argument that I would make. And I totally understand David, and I understood John, which is why I gave it a second look, because they had agreed to this months ago.
But I mean, if there is an extra room somewhere, it'd be an easy decision, I think.
Correct.
I'll just, that's what I was getting at, is there's a move that's easy to support, and then there's the, you know. Any thoughts? Any other thoughts, I should say? Is there a motion?
One is two weeks' meeting from today.
Two calendar weeks would be the January second meeting.
I would move to defer to January second, because if I vote today, I'd vote no.
Same here on second.
Motion by Radig, second by DeWitt, to postpone for until January second. PJ, since this item became public on the agenda, have you been contacted by any other supervisors on, you know, clarifying the agenda item?
No, no. No. And I tried to make it as clear as possible in that authorization request. And I've tried to make everybody know, and I've talked to David, and like I said, I was never trying to hide it from them, I understand what David's saying. And so, it's nothing against any of that stuff.
Any other discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Nay. Jeremy, you're still with us?
I heard a kid in the background at some point.
Yeah, that was the last thing I heard as a kid. Yeah. Mr. Taylor, are you still with us? He is not still with us. So, the vote is three to one, unopposed, and at this point, Taylor is absent.
And now, will it automatically come back on that agenda, so I don't have to fill out the forms?
Unless you like paperwork.
No, that would be a swearing-in, Dave, if I'm not incorrect, right, Pat?
It's just the election.
Okay. Know how those go sometimes.
Thank you. Item fifteen from the County Auditor, Pat Gill, is approval of the elimination of a policy in issuing a directive regarding motor vehicle titles issued in the ownership of the county. Some of the talking points are enumerated in the chairman's report, item A, I included the minutes, but I'll turn it over to Pat.
Thank you. When we started the Policy Review Committee, the goal was to get rid of the redundant and older ones that really didn't make any sense, or just ones that didn't really need to be policies. We discussed this in our Policy Committee Review Meeting, and we talked about why it originally came, is that the county had suffered a few incidents where titles for vehicles were missing, nobody was able to find them. And so, at that point, we made a policy, is that we purchased a fireproof safe and put it in the County Auditor's office, so all the titles would be there. At first, some departments didn't want to put them there, but I think they are all housed there now, is that correct, Michelle? I think all the secondary roads, is that?
We moved reluctantly. We never had a problem finding our titles.
But that was what occurred, so at the Policy Review Committee Meeting, we voted to take that, to rescind it as a policy and just issue it as a directive, so that we're not cluttering up the policy book with things that can be handled by simple things, simple matters.
And we also discussed that, you know, obviously, we have that power already, so if someone, you know, why do you need a policy to say that you can do what you can do? And it's deeded to, you know, the titles in Woodbury County's name. So, I would move that?
I'll second.
Second by Radig. Discussion. All's in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Mr. Taylor, you're back.
I'm back.
I think you skipped out, because you didn't want to vote on the remodel of the North Conference Room.
Well, if it was somewhat controversial, I was caught, so, no, I had a bad line there for a moment, so.
Mr. Taylor, how would you like to be recorded on that vote?
I'll vote in the affirmative, thank you.
Did you know the vote was to postpone?
Mr. Potabom is asking if you know the vote was to postpone for two weeks, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, yes, I figured as much. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification.
Item sixteen is the chairman's report, includes item A, Policy Review Committee. The minutes are included in the backup. Obviously, one of the actions we took is reflected in the move the board took just now on the vehicle title policy. We also reviewed and eliminated a redundant policy and procedure, when there's two of them, in regards to drug and alcohol, and under the advice of, you know, legal counsel and Human Resources Director. We also looked at the voluntary vacation donation that has been brought to the board at one point, and also the Policy Review Committee. You can read the minutes and see the reasoning behind why we decided against that. And we looked at some continued policy ideas for IT. We're making great strides there, and a lot of it is, you know, the county reacting to good things the city has on paper, and the city reacting to good things the county has on paper, because it's a shared office. Item B is the Simcoe Board of Directors meeting I attended December fourteenth. The major action was to mold together the Simcoe Board with the Council of Elected Officials, which are basically the same people, and to clarify some of that, and have a treasurer be voted upon, and the financial report, and there were no issues there. Item C is the recognition of outgoing Human Resources Director Gilwin. I feel it's appropriate, or his last board meeting of the year, for us to have a chance to thank him for providing leadership and direction to the department. I think that overall, it was a seismic shift in the right direction. And I will say, dealing with Mr. Gilwin personally as a supervisor, you know, the strengths are certainly respect and deference, and just a sense of integrity, that I think is going to be good for the department going forward, especially with the training of the replacement within the department, and just to know that there's that support. And so, I just wanted to make sure that, before we got out of this year, that there was some recognition of what you've done, Ed, for the department, and have it on record, and say, you know, there's a lot of things we could list, and there's a lot of different things that were clarified, a lot of different things that were cleaned up within the workings of the department and for the county as a whole. And I've received, you know, word from different elected officials and different department heads that have been very appreciative of the steps taken. And we wish you the best in your future endeavors, and I think you deserve a round of applause. Anyone else want to say anything?
I just want to say thank you, that I've got a unique perspective, I worked for you for a year also. I want to thank you for everything you've done.
I also want to add an item to the chairman's report, just to discuss our next meeting. How does the board feel about having our organizational meeting start at 2:00 PM on January second, and follow that up with our normal budget review discussion? We typically don't have the budget review before an organizational meeting. And Pat, that one?
I concur.
Thank you. Anyone else have a problem with starting at 2:00 PM and following the regular meeting with the budget review?
Two o'clock's fine.
Okay, then that's when it will be set. Item seventeen, are there any reports on committee meetings?
We had the Witt.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you have a minute?
Marty's pointing to the speaker. Marty's pointing to the speakers, which means that you can go first, Jeremy.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. I just wanted to briefly update the board on Suland District Health. We discussed the budget for the upcoming year. There was not consensus among the board members going forward on a budget recommendation. So, I believe when we have a fuller district health board, we will take up that discussion again. One point of contention is over the Homemaker Home Health Program, which was recommended being winnowed back. That's about $180,000, and to keep within the general sphere of the similar tax askings. So, with that, as you may remember from years past, we have not typically shifted from grant funds to tax funds, and that's been part of that discussion since those grants went away. So, I just wanted to update the board that we'll have continued discussions, I'm sure, after the first of the year.
Thank you.
We have the WIC meeting pretty much on an eventful, except that the discussion did come up on the chair of the WCICC board. And John was gonna get back to us, and I haven't heard back from him yet, terms, and they were gonna look at some city policy too, and then get back to us.
The way that works is, there's two county and two city officials, and the chair is typically a layman, which has worked out well for that committee. So, we appreciate it. Any other reports on committee meetings? Pat, do you want to update the board just on the January 8th?
Yes. And January 8th, we're going to have a township official training. And after that, that'll start at 5:00. Then we are gonna have dinner for the township officials at 6:00. And at 7:00, I've invited all the city councils and mayors and clerks. And I think Gary Brown is inviting the EMS folks to this meeting. But it's generally, it's a discussion to talk about the need for paramedic coverage out in the rural areas, and the towns and areas, and options for funding.
Where are we holding that, Pat?
That's at the Western Iowa Tech, at the Rockland Center. I sent you all emails, and I sent you the copy of what I sent to the township officials, and I also sent you what I sent to the city mayors and councils. It's just a meeting designed to talk about Mr. Brown's proposal for paramedic coverage, and Dennis will cover some options on how to pay for that, if you indeed want to do that.
So, they need, they want us there at 7:00?
Yes. I'm encouraging you to come at 5:00, so that you can learn about what Township trustees.
Well, that's, I had 5:00 written down, and then I heard you keep going and say 7:00, so I changed it.
No, we have, the township training is at 5:00 for the officials. We're gonna have dinner at 6:00, and just kind of continue with that meeting. And then at 7:00 is when all the other folks are invited to it.
So, that's not at the Security Institute, though?
No, at the Rockland Center, which is the corporate college. Take the most north, yeah, most north parking lot.
Okay.
Any other reports on committee meetings? Any citizen concerns, item eighteen?
Dwayne Hoffmeyer, I'll be short. I was gonna try to make it to 4:30, but I couldn't make it. Dwayne Hoffmeyer, Chief Judge. I sent to all of you today in email, the Chief Justice issued a supplemental order today on courthouse security. And I think, to a large extent, it is the result of maybe the order I entered here, that defines what's a court-controlled area. And so, he allows for an opt-out for counties, if they'd like to do that, if there's an area not totally occupied by the court system. I speak to you just for your information only, and obviously, there's no decision-making to it, but this would be consistent with how I only took second floor at Trosper Hoyt, and that's the only court-controlled facility. And the rest of it is not subject to my court security order. The Law Enforcement Center is all court-security facility, and would not be subject to this. But the courthouse would arguably fit into this a little bit. When I issued my order, and it kind of goes to our space issue mentioned by Supervisor Raddig, there are court officials on every floor, except for fifth, seventh, and eighth. And so, and there was a majority of employees. And so, that is how we, I justified the order, and then gave the sheriff authority to, if someone has a permit, they can either place their weapon in the lockbox or be escorted, so they don't have to necessarily disarm. So, I'm not thinking that there's any change that has to be in place. I think, to some extent, it maybe is consistent with our order in defining exactly what is a court-controlled space. But it does bring in the main floor and sixth floor, which we were talking about, which is a mixed-use floors. So, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of it, and answer any questions you may have, and where do you go from there?
Why do you think the Chief Judge issued this order? Do you think it was in regards to your administrative order, or?
No, I think it was probably, so I hear there's a handful of counties out there where this has been more of an issue than others. And many of them are more of a mixed courthouse than we have here. I mean, there are many, and I think it's probably just defining that, you know, clarifying what that is in those situations, more than others. So, I don't know really what the motivation was. I heard about it the first as a possibility last week, and I knew it was coming out today. So, that's about the extent of what I know.
So, obviously, this board has taken a stance that is in conflict with previous orders. So, my question is, you know, just reading the shells in here, what is your opinion on, or, you know, I'm not formally asking, but when it mentions a written application that may coincide with the board's sentiment and the board's action previously, it mentions the Chief Judge shall enter an order granting the modification. What is your understanding of that?
I think the understanding would be is, and I, and again, is, if it is, if it is a mixed, I'm trying to look for the language, if it's not totally occupied by the court system, there would be, I think, deference given to the county, and then liability would switch back to the county for that. So, much like probably was in existence in the past. But what I'm hoping, that because we give the discretion to the sheriff on how they enforce that now, you know, I don't think they physically forced anyone to disarm or do it, either lockbox or go up. I would certainly not want my judges to start thinking that they need court security in their courtrooms, and the need grow beyond what we can already cover through our single-point access. You know, when I started in '82, there was a court security officer in every courtroom. I don't want to get back to that stage. And so, I think all of our judges are happy with the single-point access. And the court has the, or the sheriff has the obligation to provide security for the court system. So, I would just like to avoid that possibility, that he'll have to provide court security more than, with more individuals than we currently have. I think that would be a tremendous budget buster. And I mean, we've already heard Supervisor Dewitt of, you know, the need exists, you know, here in the basement, where the fine collection is at, and the county attorney, and it's, you know, he'll have a better idea where all the problems have been over the months, so. So, I'm hoping it can just continue as it is, in that it will be cost-effective, and deferring to the sheriff, I don't think we've had any problems. So, from, I mean, no groups have come, none have been refused, as I understand it, and I haven't been sued, so, you know, all good things.
There is a big change from, you know, the, you know, as you mentioned, the threshold now is totally occupied, and it used to be somewhat occupied by the court system. The supervisory order would apply, is that right?
You know, that's a distinction I haven't given thought to, other than, I think they were talking totally occupied by the court system. So, I mean, I think you could use main floor here, as the best example, where it's half.
Right. Well, thank you for being here. I was gonna bring it up during board concerns, so I'm glad you stepped up and.
Wish I was here at 4:30, I would've left there.
Yeah. Any thoughts on that? Because it is a, it is a big deal, supervisory order. If the board has not changed their, you know, direction, given with the vote in the past, then it's a matter of, do we fall through with what the board's chosen? And request what this says, we can request.
So, Judge, if you're declaring the sixth floor, then so?
David, yep.
It's just a question, so Judge, if you're declaring the sixth floor, when citizens come in, if they are choosing to carry, they would be notified that they could not carry on the sixth floor, because it would be part of the order, is that correct? Say if they came in for a building permit or something?
No, I think currently, they would either leave their weapon in the lockbox and come up, or the security have the option of coming with them, you know, while they've processed that. But if you elect to deviate from that, and ask that, that because it's not 100% court-controlled sixth floor, so, in theory, they could. And I, and that's why, when we talk about space, why I want court people there. And you need to keep in mind, you have a justice from the Iowa Supreme Court there periodically. So, those are some concerns. But no, under that, if the board were to elect to opt-out, they would be.
Well, I, you know, it's, not everybody that comes up is happy with decisions that are given out of our office as well. So, I was just wondering if that, sort of, safety precaution would be, would be something that? We just need to deputize you, and then you got an armed guard right there. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Dewitt?
I would, I would think for the, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but I would think for, I would think it'd be best just to leave it as is, because, one, we do have a lockbox down there. And, two, I don't like the idea of escorting somebody, simply because they're a hard going to secure, and it's vertical. And I don't like the idea of just leaving one person at the second point, I consider. But I'm stepping on the line, and so be it, but speaking from the security aspect of it, and certainly not speaking for the sheriff's office, but I would probably opt to leave it as, as we're currently doing it.
Well, regardless of our opinions of the issue, or what is partially or in total control of whatever entity, I think, you know, my opinion is that the supervisory order backtracks the first one. Because it, I think the court, I think the Chief Justice realized that they went too far. Otherwise, they would have written exactly what they wrote here the first time around. So.
I gave up years ago, trying to guess why judges do what they do, so. And I agree with Supervisor Dewitt. Right now, I'm just, we leave it as is, and if somebody wants to research it a little more, we can do that.
I just don't understand how justice could, and to your point, I don't understand how justice could, could differentiate between I and I've ever counted. I guess my point, I don't think you're right, that it's a statewide issue, and not separate counties by, you know, not every courthouse is like this.
Mm-hmm. And that's why it's hard, when you write a statewide order, that it's gonna work for everybody. There's several different situations before. Judge?
I think that's probably the best explanation for why he has stepped back, is because most of the rural courthouses are all mixed. And some have adopted resolutions, some have not. And so, it's probably more designed for those smaller, multi, everything is in the courthouse, is what I would suspect is the motivation for doing this, so.
Any other board concerns? We are adjourned, thank you.